Yeah, that's what I was thinking you were saying.
We have one more question.
Um, we do not have any additions, but I would add right in that we do one solution, or at least a table maybe, or just table it when you get to it.
Okay.
Um, I think that will be it for now.
Okay.
So, we'll come back in the next.
What is it?
It's those certification, we want to make sure that we have the numbers accurate and you may change state because of the sales on these things. Yeah, it would be tabled for the next meeting.
Okay. And then we're, um, adoption of signatures, we have a motion by the president. Motion by the president.
Second.
Second. Second by Cheryl. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Okay, District 741 is proud of, uh, Tavon Spanier, grade 10, for earning all conference in the West Central Conference in cross-country during the fall of 2014. Andrea Schmidt, um, grade 12, for earning all conference in the West Central Conference in cross-country during the fall of 2014. Ella Johnson, grade 11, for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in volleyball during the fall of 2014. Lexi Skogland, um, grade 12, for earning all conference, West Central Conference in volleyball during the fall of 2014. Ashley Pralak, grade 11, for earning the following volleyball awards during the fall of 2014. All conference, West Central Conference. West Central Conference, South Best Hitter. West Central Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. Ally Stanger, grade 12, for earning the following volleyball awards during the fall of 2014. All conference, West Central Conference. West Central Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention. All Section 6 AA. Lexi Skogland, um, grade 12, for being named West Central Tribune, All Area Honorable Mention in volleyball during the fall of 2014. The Painsville Volleyball Team, for earning West Central Conference South Champions in the fall of 2014. Matthew Quaid, grade 12, for earning the following football awards during the fall of 2014. West Central Conference Most Valuable Player. West Central Tribune, All Area Team in Football. Minnesota Vikings, All State Team. All Conference in the West Central Conference. West Central Conference Player of the League. Saint Cloud Sports Commission Player of the Week. Earning All Section 5 AA. Setting single game passing record for Painsville with seven touchdown passes, 28 completions, and 483 yards. Setting single season passing record for Painsville with 27 touchdown passes, 156 completions, and 2,431 yards. Setting career passing record with 56 touchdown passes, 325 completions, and 5,108 yards. Nicholas Dingman, grade 12, for earning the following football awards during the fall of 2014. West Central Conference Co-Most Valuable Receiver. All Conference in the West Central Conference. Honorable Mention, West Central Tribune, uh, All Area Team. Tying the school record with 10 receptions in a game. Setting a career receiving record with 25 touchdown receptions, 80, um, receptions and 1,529 yards. Brandon Schlepper, uh, grade 12, for earning the following football award during the fall of 2014. West Central Conference Co-Most Valuable Receiver. All Conference in the West Central Conference. Honorable Mention, West Central Tribune, All Area Team. Bryce Savage, grade 12, for earning the following football awards during the fall of 2014. All Conference in the West Central Conference. Honorable Mention, West Central Tribune, All Area Team. Anthony Wampert, grade 12, for earning the following football awards during the fall of 2014. All Conference in the West Central Conference. Honorable Mention, West Central Tribune, All Area Team. Alex Krantz, grade 12, for earning the following football awards during the fall of 2014. All Conference in the West Central Conference. Honorable Mention, West Central Tribune, All Area Team. Setting a school record with the most types of touchdowns in a career with rushing, receiving, interception return, kick return touchdowns. Mitch Widener, grade 12, for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in the football during the fall of 2014. Nicholas Reiman, grade 12, for earning honorable mention, West Central Conference in football during the fall of 2014. Trent Gerkin, grade 12, for earning All Section 5 AA in football during the fall of 2014. Brent Berg, grade 11, for earning All Section 5 AA in football during the fall of 2014. Grant Thompson, grade 11, for earning All Section 5 AA in football during the fall of 2014. The Painsville Football Team for winning the West Central Conference with an 8-0, um, regular season record. Coach Max Mahart for earning 2014 West Central Conference Football Coach of the Year. And then we move on to, uh, public comments. We have public comments here tonight, anybody? Okay. Um, next we would approve and correct minutes from the November 25th, 2014 Riddler Board Meeting. Motion by Deb.
Second.
A second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Okay, uh, nothing on the consent agenda, and now we are to business. And so, just for everybody sitting here, the public, most everybody's been here before, but we have public comment on every single business item. So, we'll try and work in the moment for everybody. Number one is review truth in taxation information for taxes payable in 2015.
Steve here from KIWI. Presenting our. Thank you to Chair, Board Members, and Mr. Superintendent. Steve Bumper with KIWI Financial. Um, and we do some work with financial planning for the school district. And one of the requirements that every school district has, oh, one of the requirements that every district has, let's get into this one, is to provide a truth in taxation hearing before the board certifies the levy for the taxes payable the next year. And so, that's why I'm here to give a presentation on that. And Mr. Superintendent, if you go over the next slide.
Wonderful.
So, the levy calendar, um, staff here in the district starts back in the summer months, as early as June, gathering information and submitting that to the Minnesota Department of Education. And the Department of Education collects that data to eventually put out levy data sheets that the board will act on and certify. In August, the board set the date and location for the hearing, which was today's.
Can we hold one second? Can I, um, could you hand that microphone up to me?
Absolutely.
We have a lot of you down there listening at home and, um...
With all the mic, they will not hear you well.
Okay, there you go. Sorry about that. It didn't work very well.
Sorry, Mr. Okay, so others back up, in June, um, again, staff is sending information from Minnesota Department of Education. In August, the school board set the location and time of the hearing, which was for tonight. In September, the school board took action on certifying a proposed levy. In November, um, the county mails out tax notices to every parcel in the school district, telling them what proposed taxes would be. And also in November can be the time for an election, which actually happened in this school district, as you can probably tell. And then in December, which we're at right now, you can hold a public hearing, and then before December 31st, you need to certify the final tax levy to your county and your state as well. The requirements at truth in taxation hearing as listed by statute is you need to have a presentation of the current school year budget, including where your revenues and expenditures came from and are going to by program area. You need to have a proposed tax levy to include percentage change from year to year over year, and you also must allow public comment at the end of the hearing before you certify the final levy. So, the school district, when we look at the budget, it's composed of six major funds. General Fund is a major fund for a school district. That's where all your instructional expenses are located, and your revenues, where all your teachers are being paid from, um, where your transportation costs are, all your maintenance for the school districts, et cetera. Your Food Service Fund is pretty self-explanatory. All the students eat their meals, that's where that's recorded. Your Community Service Fund is becoming more and more of a, uh, larger fund in most school districts. A lot of your early childhood education goes there, your adult basic education goes there, your after-school programs are listed in your Community Service Fund. Your Building Construction Fund, which you haven't been using in the past, will now be a fund that you will be using because of the positive votes in issuing the bonds and now having some construction related to the issuance of those bonds. Your Debt Service Fund is monies that are put aside to pay off the debt and bonds that you sold in the past and the bonds that you'll be issuing here tonight. And then your Trust Fund is for some specialized dollars that are reserved for trust and agency funds as well. So, when we look at the 2015 budget summary, and this is the budget that would have been approved by the board, with the exception of the Asterix Construction Fund, I'll get to that as I go through. You notice that the General Fund, the board approved roughly $9.3 million of revenue and $9.1 million of expenses. So, that shows, um, a surplus budget of $187,000. And that comes off the heels of the audit report for this year 14, where you actually got a positive $73,000 revenue or expenses for this year 2014. So, it's a nice reversal in trend from what has been happening in the tax for Painsville store. Certainly good news for the taxpayers. Um, your Food Service Fund is a fairly balanced budget, as is your Community Service Fund. The Asterix Fund, the Construction Fund, and board members, again, you have not taken action on this yet, but it would be very likely that you'll approve or revise budget for the end of fiscal year 15, because these dollars that will be awarded tonight as your board has approved, the construction bonds that will be sold, you're going to recognize the full $2 million of revenue in fiscal year 15. However, the expenses, you'll only recognize those expenses that actually occur between now and June 30th. And so, that's estimated at being around $60,000. Eventually, you know, you're going to spend $2 million on a construction project. So, next year, when you do 2016 budget, your revenues for your construction will be very small, just interest earnings, and your expenses are going to get a balance, so you're going to be the flip side out of balance on that as well. Your Debt Service, you'll notice, is very similar to last year's, uh, or, I'm sorry, your revenue expenses are very balanced. You're collecting the same amount of taxes that you expect to pay out, and then your agency fund is a very small portion of your, of your, all your dollars. So, if we look at where the funds, um, are going to or coming from from the revenue side, um, we have 71% again, that's your largest fund, your General Fund. This year, we have an anomaly with your Construction Fund creating such a large piece, 16%, because of the $2 million worth of the bond sale, and the other funds aren't listed as such. Where are the monies going from? Again, a little bit skewed percentage-wise because of your bond sale this year, so 15% of your total dollars are coming, are represented by that $2 million group of, um, dollars that will be sold tonight. State aid, however, is still representing by far the largest portion, so most of the dollars that comes to the school district are certainly controlled by the state and legislation by the state, and that represents 62%, where your local property taxes are at 13%. Very small portion, um, comes from the federal government, only 4%. And your other percent really represents everything, it's kind of a catch-all category, that would be, um, grants, and that would be food service dollars that are coming in from local people, your community ed fees, et cetera. Your gain receipts to the end, knows the past, what game was going on, so those dollars ain't going in that category as well. So, where do your expenditures go? This matches very, very closely to where your revenues come. So, again, the line share is going into your General Fund. Again, a little bit out of balance on, on revenues, strictly because of the Construction Fund. You're not spending the full $2 million in fiscal year 15 of the $2 million proceeds, so that's why that percentage is a little bit different on the expenditures set on the And then where do they go? They go to, um, once again, the line share is going to your elementary and secondary regular instruction, that's 30%, that's the largest piece of the pie there. If you go into the, the sites and buildings portion, I guess I can probably point to that here, that part of the chart, 17%, that is where, um, your 800-some thousand dollars of construction expenditures are, are listed, so that's why that is a little bit skewed, a little bit higher than you can see in a normal given year. And then your special ed instructions are, um, the next in line at 13%. Now, we'll look at the proposed levy, um, for taxes payable in 2015. And when you're collecting taxes payable in 2015, that is for the 2015-2016 school year, so I know we get kind of confused on some of those things as well. So, this is just the, the General Fund portion of the levy listed by categories. And I won't go through each one of those, I highlight the significant changes on another slide going forward, but board members can certainly take a look and see those things. The bottom line, of course, is what, uh, most of the people in the community would want to look at, and you're going from last year $913,000 total General Fund levy to $1,173,000, which is an increase of $260,000, or 28%. Again, the line share of that is, is because of the positive yes vote that was taken in November on the Capital Projects Levy. If we look at the Community Service Fund, you'll notice that it's, it's a very negative change. It is a $4,000 amount, it actually is a higher percentage, 6%, and almost all the changes there are, um, because of adjustments, changes and adjustments for prior years. When, when, when every school district certifies a levy, they're always doing it based on a lot of estimates. And one of the most significant estimates that people use are pupil units, and they come into, um, categories a lot, and so the, the, the state is constantly adjusting for past years when you actually get final reports. And so, sometimes there's some, some variances between adjustments for prior years, and that's what's happening in your community ed fund. So, that's why there's a slight increase, there's just not as much of a negative adjustment for prior years, um, in community ed from the year past. Then we go to the last category of your levy, and that is for your Debt Service. And you'll notice, um, here that last year's, um, levy was $754,000 for a board-approved Debt Service. This year, it's estimated $803,000, so a change of $49,000. And I know you're going to have some staff here from your other financial consultants that will report on your bond sale, and that's going to change slightly, probably by about $6,000 from what's represented here tonight, um, on this slide. Um, so it's good news, so it's going to go down just a little bit slightly. But anyways, the increase from last year's Debt Service to this year's Debt Service, again, is tied to your, um, the positive vote that you had in the round here as well. So, if we look at all three of those funds, the General Fund, the Community Ed Fund, and your Debt Service Fund, you notice that your levy is going from $1,752,000 from last year to a proposed levy of $2,82,561 for taxes payable in 2015, or a change of $330,000. And again, that will be higher reduced by about $6,000 after your action taken tonight. So, a 19% change year over year. Now, I've listed out some of those major changes, um, so instead of having all those little small fine prints on some of those, um, slides, you can kind of see here the things that really impacted you the most. So, prior to the election, so if the, the election didn't take place, or if the no, if no votes were on all, all of your questions, you would have had an increase in equity on the property tax side of things, anyways, of $25,000. You would have had an increase in operating capital on the levy side of things of just under $12,000. You would have had a levy of $9,700, which is a new categorical, um, item that the state is allowing this year, um, that's called Achievement and Integration levy. You would have had a decrease in health and safety expenditures of $36,000, and the net impact of prior adjustments, in this case, um, had the impact of $10,500. So, your total impact for all those changes prior to the election, your levy would have gone up roughly $20,726. Now, the major changes that are because of the two questions that were passed on the election, the Capital Project Referendum is causing your General Fund levy to go up roughly $200,000, almost $240,000. And the Debt Service on the bond issue is causing your Debt Service portion to go up $55,000 for $61, and again, that number will be slightly adjusted by roughly $6,000 lower after tonight's action. So, the total impact there is, is roughly $295,000. So, if we look at this again, prior to the election, um, the total levy would have gone up by $34,000, almost $35,000, a 1.99% increase. After, um, the two questions that were, um, passed on the election, your total levy is going up roughly $330,000 or an 18.84% increase. Everyone, um, in the district should have received a statement that looks very similar to this one. Obviously, it would have your property tax specific information on it. One thing I'd always like to point out when people receive these notices and come to hearings is that there's different categories down here below, that you're going to be taxed by the county, you're being taxed by the school district, and you're being taxed by the city. So, um, sometimes, you know, each different entity can have either pluses or minuses on your tax, and a lot of the kinds of people, of course, racially, so just look at their bottom line, and you just, you just need to pay attention to what, um, taxing entity is causing you the increase or decrease. There's also spots here on, um, your tax statement that's going to show you your valuation from one year to the next. And certainly, if your property value is being assessed at a higher rate of return, that's going to have a negative effect, or your taxes will increase, or they, or conversely, if your valuation goes down, um, the impact of the tax increase won't be as great. There was a, a phrase here that was, uh, put on everyone's tax statement down below, which I know you can't read on that slide, so I'm going to read it to you. And that, um, same statement or a similar statement to that would have been in any district in the state who was having a referendum being held in November when the tax, the tax statements were going up. And that statement says, "Your school district was scheduled to hold a referendum at the November general election. If the referendum was approved by the voters, the school district's voter-approved property tax for 2015 may be higher than the proposed amount shown on this notice." And so, that is true, because two of your questions did pass, and so the property tax statements that people did receive in the mail are showing the impact of, of the levy without the approval of those two questions. So, I just want to make sure that...
One question.
Oh, one question, I'm sorry. Oh, the one question. So, um, I just want to make sure that people understand that, that when they actually get their true property tax bill, that they'll have to pay in the spring, it will be for a higher amount than they just received in the mail this past couple of weeks. Other factors that may affect your individual property tax statement, which I talked about these actually already, again, the increase or decrease in the valuation, whether or not you had a new election, which you did, and then, again, the city, county, and other special districts, the other taxing entities in their district. One place that people can go for more information for property tax relief is listed on this slide, um, the state, the taxes, that state, and then the US, potentially just to see if they do qualify for some tax relief. And then this last slide, I, if I qualify this, um, the, the district will, um, take action on a, on a dollar amount to the pending levy certification, but they actually will take that at their next board meeting. Um, and that is because the bonds are being awarded tonight, they were sold this afternoon, and the others, staff and employees will report on that, um, and this amount, again, will decrease by probably about $6,000. So, as soon as the state reruns the numbers, you'll have a different dollar amount that you will certify, and that will be, what I'm told by Mr. Chair, that will take place at your next board meeting. So, it's going to be close this mountain, this won't be something that... Okay, with that, um, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for any other questions or any other comments, um, from the public.
Any questions from the board, anybody? Anybody have questions in the public? Do you have something you want to say? Did we cover everything?
I think so, but, uh, the two, they'll put up the last slide. Now, the certification amount of, uh, that's a lot of money. Anyway, wasn't that $177,000 on the old certification that you did in September? So, we'll be certifying for this next meeting.
Very good.
Last slide, and turn around.
This one here? You're talking about this number? Um, it's less than that. But what was your question? You're talking about $177?
Did we certify in September for $177,000 and...
No, it wasn't, Eric, but in September, you would have taken action to certify what was called a maximum.
Right, and that's, what was that number?
What's it?
I don't remember. I have it. $1,787,352.70.
Say that again.
Okay. So, it was increased for the Capital Project Referendum, which was almost $240,000 when the state calculated it, and then we included an amount for the Debt Service levy of about...
55.
55,000. Okay. So, those would be the two changes. To get to that number exactly, and now we'll adjust it down just a little bit based upon the sale results today.
Good.
Thank you. I'm sorry to call on you, but I could just see that you had a question there, and I was...
I knew that number was going to change.
Okay, so, if there's nothing else, um, we would then move to number two, which we're going to table, correct?
Correct.
And we're going to table that, um, this is, oh, accurate numbers. Okay, so we as a board know that's going to go down from there. Okay, then we should be, um, move it to number three. Review and Consider Approval and Resolution Awarding a Sale, Determining the Form and Details Authorizing the Execution Delivery and Registration and Providing For the Payment of $2,030,000, or $30,000 General Application School Building Bonds Series 2014.
That's all, Paul.
Well, I'll let you expand.
Okay, so, Greg is the end of our sale day report, which summarizes the results from the sale. We took bids at noon today. So, if you turn to the first page, you'll see a summary of the results, and again, the purposes listed there, financing the acquisition of veteran of school sites and facilities in the district, and it's the long list of everything that was included in valid question one, um, the bond issue portion of that question. You'll see that the rating was assigned as a credit enhancement rating, Moody's AA2, and that's because you're participating in the state credit enhancement program, and we approve that as part of the resolution, so the state guarantees the payment of your debt, and there's no cost to participate in that program, so we always recommend that you participate in that program. Your underlying rating was affirmed at an A2, which is what it's been the last couple of years. We received six bids, which is great. We always like to see at least three, so six is fantastic. And you'll see that nice low interest rate that Cam referred to just a minute ago of 2.1234. So, that was excellent. And the high bid was just at a 2.3395. So, all of the bids were actually under the estimates that we provided to you on November 12th. The principal amount then is the $2,030,000 that was authorized by the boarders, and, um, there's a summary of some of the other specific information related to the bond issue in the table there. The total net PNI is actually your total outstanding for your existing and new debt. We'll get to just the new debt portion in a minute. And then you'll see that we did just get a slight premium bid from the winning bidder. Some of the other bidders provided a more sizable premium, but we take all of the different components of their bid into consideration when we calculate that true interest rate, and that the true interest cost is what we award the bid on. So, the lowest bidder just gave a small premium, um, so we did need to adjust the schedule a little bit, because we planned on a bid of perhaps a larger premium, and I think I told you at the November 12th meeting that we would adjust depending upon what the little bidder gave us. So, that's what we did. And you'll see in the notes there that the interest rates have continued to come down a little bit even since the meeting in November. In fact, throughout this whole last year, rates have continued to come down, they've gone up just a little bit over the last... They've gone up just a little bit over the last week or so, but otherwise, they've stayed nice and low. So the bids are... The cost is lower than our pre-salesments for November, and quite a bit less than the amounts that we told the taxpayers prior to the election. And because just the first question passed, we did reduce the term of the bonds too. Remember, we talked about the fact that if just question one passed, we'd consider issuing a 10-year bond rather than 15-years, and we could still meet that tax impact that we told to the taxpayers. So that's in fact what we did. So it's just a 10-year bond issue, so a lot less interest cost than it would have been under a 15-year and a lot lower rate. So the closing date, when you get your proceeds, will be December 22nd. The resolution was sent to you prior to the meeting, and we'll fill in all the blanks based on the action that you take tonight. And then let's just walk through the attachments. So page three and four includes the bid tab, and you'll see the six bids and the details relating to the bids. And the different... If you look at the price, that shows you how much of a premium each of them were offering, and you just compare that to the 2,030,000 par amount, and you can see again that the low bidder just had a small premium built into their bid price. The low bidder is Northland Securities out of Minneapolis. Piper Jack brand Minneapolis was the next lowest bidder, and they were very close, 2.1473. Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And then on the second page, you'll see the remaining three bidders, Boonings in Minnesota, St. Petersburg, Florida, and Birmingham, Alabama. So we had interest from throughout the country, which is great. It's nice to see those many bids. It's nice to see such a great low rate. It's nice that it all worked out, even right after the holiday. Bruce was worried about that. So we did have people busy at work after eating all their turkey last week. And then you'll see the next schedules are just updates, and these are the exact schedules that we gave you with your November 12 report, just updated now for the final sale results. So again, the premium and discount from the underwriter, you'll see the deposit to the construction fund account is just shy of 2,000,000 dollars, so 1,993,786 is what you'll have for your projects. I know that's a little bit higher than what our estimates were even for review and comment, so I think that will be good. It's always nice to have a little bit of cushion in there. Page six then is an update to the debt schedule that we've gone through a number of times, and now you'll see the actual numbers for your proposed new debt, the 2,030,000 in principal, 355,000, 557 dollars in interest. The tax rate is on the far right-hand column. And then next, the tax impact schedule. So now we can show the actual results compared to what was estimated prior to the election, and I just highlighted the $100,000 home. So for question one, we were estimating a $29 tax impact, $6 for the bond issued, $23 for the Campbell Project levy. Based upon the updated information we have now on the bond sale results, it'll be $4 for the bond and $22 for the Campbell Project levy, so the total is $26 on a $100,000 home or $3 less. So that is excellent. Very happy with those results. And then next comes the Moody's report, starting on page eight. So this is the report that they issued after a very short conversation, I would say with Bob and Joan. We've talked to them a couple of times recently, so I prefaced our... At the beginning of our conversation, I said, "I think we'll be able to get through this really quickly, right?" And we did. It went... That was one of the more expedient calls that I've been a part of. So Bob and Joan did a great job again of representing the district and providing them with information and the answers to the questions that the analysts had, so that was very helpful. So you'll see summary ratings rationale toward the bottom of page eight. They pointed out a couple of strengths to the district, and one is the history of order approved support for the operating levy referendums and manageable debt burden. So relatively speaking, Haynesville area schools does not have a lot of debt outstanding, and it's paid off very quickly. Your challenges, declining enrollment trend that negatively impacts operating revenues. And then the detailed, narrow general fund reserves, they would like to see your fund balance higher, and I know you guys are working to get that in a better position. And then the detailed credit discussion is shown on page nine, continues on to page 10. And then the only other thing I would point out on their report is they give you a description of what could change the rating to make it go up and what could change the rating to make it go down. So those are kind of their ideas going forward on the bond rating, underlying bond rating for the school district. And that's everything. We're really very, very, very happy with the results. We're glad it turned out so well, and some great changes and new projects for the school district and community.
Just glancing at page seven, it looks like we're saved 10 percent or more for all of the taxpayers putting this together. So it was a sizable amount. Another curious question, because of the lower interest rate, how much did we really save the taxpayers? Is it that $7,900? What is that pro rate? Do you have any idea over 10 years? Did we save them $80,000 or...
So just compared to our, you know, our November estimates, we initially, if both questions had passed, we were estimating an interest rate for a 15-year term of 3.5%. Once the referendum results were known, then for your November meeting, we backed off on that rate to 2.4%. And the total interest cost at that time was about 426,000 dollars. So that was already down quite a bit from what our initial estimates were. So you could compare that 426,000 to the now 356. Yeah. So it's a sizable difference even since November. And if we probably kind of... We probably kind of need to incorporate our initial estimates from review and comment.
Yeah.
But that would have been the 15-year and both bond issues.
Yeah.
I don't know that we had one for...
Maybe for a discreet one.
Oh, question one?
I can flip through the file and answer every question. It was... I just think from the taxpayer's standpoint, the district did work really hard along with you. We've saved the money on the interest. We've saved them actual dollars because of that, and I think with approval, we did a good job of making sure this was done, which was more good for you guys, obviously.
Yeah, I think it was good to get the bond sold just as quickly as possible after the election, and we moved just about as fast as I think we could have, so I'm glad that we were able to get the bond sold today. It'll be interesting to see. Everybody keeps thinking the rates are going to go up, so it's hard to imagine they're going to go down any lower than, I mean, 2.1% is excellent, so.
Any other questions of anybody? Okay. More questions? We have a motion from Deb to approve the resolution awarding the sale of the bonds. And a second by Luke. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Nothing from the public? Call in favor, say aye. Aye. Or say no. Or no.
Helen?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Luke?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And we'll stay to have you sign the documents, leaving the chair quick and...
Okay. Then number four was set a board meeting date for January 2015.
Corresponding date from this year would have been for next year, or for January, Tuesday, January 13th. So we don't have that date set. That's the date that you will set for the rest of your board meetings, for the rest of the...
So 13th at 6:30 on a Tuesday night, everybody okay with that? Okay. Who set that date?
That Wednesday, Bruce, when you're going down to the...
Yep.
Yeah, we should have a board meeting before we go, for sure.
Yeah, it's tight, but I'm not sure where you go, then you could certainly move it up a week if you wanted to.
That's good. I think it works good.
It works for me.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion tonight, or no?
I think we're just setting it. I'll let the two board members know, and we'll get that... Because at that particular meeting, that's when you set, but we'll post that.
Okay. Number five, facility project discussion. Last time we reported on the facility committee.
Last time we reported on the facility committee, we started some nice discussion at that particular time, but it was not an agenda. So at that point, the recommendation was made for a discussion about that at this meeting, and that's why it's not on the agenda. So as I mentioned, we did have a facility meeting, the facility committee did vote to bring it back in November, but that's what started the discussion. We also talked a little bit about one discussion about do we want to close on the elementary school and build a new elementary school to this one? So that's where the discussion was kind of going at that point, and then ended at that point, and it's just up to the board for some discussion on this. I did get some information on flyways and that kind of stuff. Certainly, from my point of view, I don't think where we're at right now to build a new elementary school would be the right thing. I think if we had a lot less students in the building, but virtually right now, because the building, I think, is full other than probably one classroom, you'd have to virtually build the same thing in a time that you have a declining enrollment. If the board wants me to gather more information on that, I will certainly gather more information, but I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on that if that's not where the board is thinking about going. If there's specific information on that, I will certainly gather from the board. So I think that's kind of where we're at, and I think it's just to have some discussion about it.
Well, the elementary school came up at the last thing. Everybody might get some phone calls, because I read the title of the front page of the newspaper today before I came, and it talks about how the elementary school seemed to be a priority coming forward to us. Hopefully, for everybody listening, this is just in discussion. What do we want to do? We have two things. We have the question number two, which was for facilities to expand for FIAID and other activities we have going on in the school district with the ring that we were looking at posing on the end. Some discussion came from that meeting on the elementary school. Could we address the elementary school first? Does anybody want to proceed with information on that?
If you need additional information, we'll certainly get it. We've started to pull the flyway and that type of stuff. I still have to get a check with the Minnesota Department a bit to see if there's requirements, if we put that kind of addition on, whether we have to have so much additional acreage. I haven't gotten that yet.
I don't... I know this is my last month on this board, but it just doesn't make much sense to spend all the money bringing that building up to repairing everything and getting it up to speed, which we just did or are in the process of doing. I don't believe we're at a point where we need to start looking into the details of the elementary school yet. Either way, because, like you said, we don't have enough room to move it over here as it is. We'd have to build a building the same size that's there. And that doesn't address the issues that we have with the lack of gymnasium space now. All we've done is moved it over here. So we have a lack of gymnasium space in one site instead of two, but we haven't effectively addressed either of the issues by moving this.
So any other thoughts? I guess I join in there. I think that we have other issues at the moment. I think Bob, at the report you made, you talked about the population of our school, someday in the future could get to where we would look at something like that.
Yeah.
But that's assuming we don't achieve something in our strategic planning, because you're the planner of the best, and so I would expect us after our strategic planning and everybody grouping together, maybe we see some population increase.
Well, I just know that if enrollment were to continue to decline, eventually, there will get a time when I think that that question needs to be brought up. It's very difficult for me to say you're going to build approximately the same size of building here at a time when enrollment is dropping, so now you've built the building to fit the students, enrollment continues to drop, now you have a newer section that starts to have less students in it. From my perspective, I'm just not... I just don't believe that now is the appropriate time. If the enrollment continues to drop, we start to free up both classrooms at the high school and at the elementary or the secondary building and at the elementary building, then I think you certainly would have that discussion. My hope is that we don't have to go to that point. But it's certainly up to the board on whether they want to look for more information on that. I just think you're going to build a brand-new building at a time when you could possibly lose more students in the same size. If, you know, if we were missing 10 classrooms at the high school and 10 classrooms at the elementary school that were empty, you know, I think then you're not building as big of an addition to bring them in.
I was a little surprised that this was even... Because I hadn't heard anything about the elementary school. I was just kind of wondering where it came from.
It came from at the facilities committee, and it was just a general point of discussion when we were talking about the whole project. I was a committee member that brought it up and just said, "Well, what if?" You know, because that person had heard from a person or two that said, "Well, why don't you just move the whole elementary school?" So I think it was brought up as just a discussion, and that's what should happen. Personally, it's... I have no issues with those type of ideas being brought up, because if they're not brought up and they're not discussed, I guarantee you that somebody somewhere will be talking about it, and we'll assume that the board hasn't talked about it. This way, at least it's been discussed, it may not be an option that the board wants to go down at this time, but it's been talked about. You talk about... You look at the pros and the cons for everything, and that's really what should happen during this whole discussion.
So it was just brought up as a discussion? There wasn't really a need from anywhere?
No, there was not at that particular meeting. It was just said, "Well, what if?", and that brought up, and I think the intent was to cause discussion to happen.
Because I don't... I personally think it was brought in because we all talk about doing something about... And we joke about it, we all have, about doing something for declining enrollment. All of us that are old say, "Well, we're past those years of adding kids and ha-ha, elbow each other, and that's the end of it." We need to start taking it seriously, because if it keeps declining, there will be a time when all of the kids will be able to fit in this building, or worse yet, all of them will be able to fit in the elementary building. And eventually, if we don't turn that around and start building the enrollment, that's exactly where we'll be.
I'm 100% there. We've got to figure that out, but our strategic planning process, we were going to look at that.
Well, I certainly think that facilities will come up during that discussion.
Something. Yeah, but facilities are coming. So on the elementary school, do we kind of next up for now? Everybody in agreement there? Okay. So don't worry about the elementary school at the moment.
Don't spend more time on that.
Well, and again, you know, certainly if we were going to look at that, I would certainly probably recommend to the board, and I'm not sure how we could do it now, that we'd pass question number one, but we certainly wouldn't want to spend any more of the taxpayers' dollars than we had to if we were really going to build another elementary school in addition to the secondary.
Before we go that direction, we, like Bruce was alluding to, we need a strategic plan. We need buy-in from everybody. I mean, this is years and years of planning and stuff like that. We can't just throw a whole concept of a whole new school into a mix of facilities committee type of thing. This has to stem from administration saying we need this facility to be this, and then from there, you start working on the strategic plan of how do we get there? And then from there, you keep on moving, and, I mean, you're looking at five, six, seven, eight years down the road before something like that will ever happen. So it's a conversation you bet we need to continue to be questioning and see what's where we're at and stuff like that, but again, that's where your strategic continues to renew your strategic plan, and with the players in the community of figuring out where we are, where we're going, what we need, and so on and so forth. So, yeah, we don't need to be there.
Because it's not just a building, a K-12 of schools, a whole different community, a whole different atmosphere than separate buildings.
And we'll take a considerable model plan. That's what that is.
So then the second part they discussed about was the project of adding additional space for activities. It was voted down. They're talking about possibly bringing that back in a year. Anybody have any thoughts there? I have a few, but I feel I talk too much sometimes.
You know, and certainly we can look at getting input from the community on this. I mean, there are surveys out there, and certainly we can collect information if the board wants. During the strategic plan, there'll certainly be, at least I would guess, some surveys, and, you know, that could certainly be a part of that when it all shakes out. My administrative... My administrative team had, we're going to look at, we've come up with some names of people in the business and city and community that we would like to bring in on board on the planning committee of that, and then from their goal bigger, and then invite the community into those meetings.
Well, the survey, I think the survey is interesting.
It is interesting, but I, you know, we just went through a vote. They told us what it was. So I mean, that's a pretty good survey telling us where our people are at. So I guess if we truly, as administration, as administrators of this district, seeing that we need that extra gym space, that extra community space for different activities that we're providing, then we just need to sell it better. We need to promote it, we need to have the drawings out there and say, this is what it could be, and this is what we're going to use it for, and that whole process of building that hype up to that point, but...
It's not just hype. We need to come up with solid information. We said, we did a really good job on saying we need more gymnasiums, but the question still kept coming up. For what? You know, we didn't, at the facilities meeting, Max talked about putting to, Max and Matt both, about putting together an actual schedule so that the public can do. That's one thing to say, oh, the gym's always busy. With what? When, or we have to turn kids away, or we have kids coming in before school, or they're staying late practices was one of the things that parents wanted to get away from. If we could, and if we discussed coming up with charts where parents could see that or people in the community could see that, which we didn't have.
Right, but that's all part of, that's all part of bringing that all together and selling that project to the community, saying these are our needs and why those needs are. And some might say, well, tafoya, I'm not going to support it. But there's going to be probably more people saying, you know what, that makes sense. And you know, but one of the dollar things that is so hard to grasp is what some of them were talking about is those different events that are coming into the community. How do you put a money factor on that? You can't. It's something that you say it's there economically, it's, you know, there's people that are coming in this community because of this. You know, those are things that are going to be more hypothetically stated, but it's hard to say what it is, you know? Okay, we have a tournament of 15 teams coming in. What does that mean to our community? Somebody has to do some legwork and figure that out from other communities. So what is it actually? How much money are we looking at, you know? I don't know. But those are things that we need to sell this project to, to the public.
I think the bottom line was we just didn't have enough time to sell this, because we didn't get the information early enough to get the information out. So going back in November is possibly a good time to bring it back to the public, and that gives us a year, almost.
Well, it gives us a year, but it gives us an idea of how well we're working on that. You know, we can say hypothetically, yeah, we would like to bring it back in November. We can't say 100% that we are going to bring it back in November, because we don't know what information we're going to be able to get. I mean, you know, it is hard to bring that information together.
But when do we have to make the decision of when we're bringing it to the ballot?
Well, I did get some information. We have a question, Dave, had a conversation, and this is, we did talk with our election attorney. So this is just information, I should have copied this for everybody. But he said you can't hold a special election for at least 180 days if the question doesn't pass, if you run it for the same thing, and that's one of the keys, and the same amount. But you can, if you change the amount by at least 5 to 10%, increase or decrease, or change a major component of the particular project. So if you make changes, and I remind board that just inflation alone could cause that fluctuation in the price. But if you make changes, you could hold a special election as soon as January 2, 14, which is 56 days after the general election or in the next calendar year. If the bond issue is almost the same, you could hold a special election in 180 days, which would be November 4th, 14. So that's kind of the mix of this, and I can certainly send this information out to you.
Yeah, we may. At the facilities meeting, they discussed, they truly didn't want to try to do that again, because they felt like they had rushed it the first time. Wasn't the recommendation put forward?
In November.
In November.
And I can, I mean, I can certainly give you my opinion. That would be the simplest, I think. To do anything with the community to explain and answer questions.
I have a sense that one of the issues we're looking for is more substantiated data about our issue. Is that, do we agree? So does that mean that we give, the two people I think of are Max and Matt, okay? They're telling us of the things that we are canceling that aren't coming here because of our space usage. They're involved in what goes on here. They're involved in taking our high school athletics, our middle school athletics, and at the same time, taking, the schools taking FIAID, and Max is trying to work in all these programs for the third, fourth, fifth graders that are all having an opportunity to do something different. If we give Bob the directive to go with Max and Matt to collect that data?
No, I agree, I don't agree with that. I agree that it has to be every administrator in this district that has to put the effort in. It's just not the two guys. It has to be the building, it's got to be the building, it's got to be this community, it's got to be a network, you know, because it's supposed to be bigger than just our school.
It's like we're going to get the information.
Yeah, but we need information from...
Information, let me finish. Information about the usage of the gyms that we have right now.
Right, but we need more than that. We need the plan of exactly everything that goes on.
We have to divide it up in some fashion first step, so we can get started. That's a good place to start. That's all I was saying. We get a good, I agree with you 100%. This can't be us putting something together. But when we asked the questions, they knew that we had the need, all of the people, and I was one sitting on the facilities committee, we could see it. We had lots of people testify, testify, I should say, at our public meeting, comment on issues that we had, but I don't know that the public bought it, because we didn't necessarily have substantiated data. Now there's some time here. So we're right in the busy season. Already, we've had canceled basketball practices for things that have happened. But are we tracking that stuff? You are not going to get anywhere if you don't track all of it.
I believe that Max is tracking all of it.
Okay, so then, going back to what Mark's talking about, maybe the team needs to be the administrators and Matt and Max and potentially coaching staff, somebody so we have good substantiated data. The thing that I look at on a big gym is have we gotten a big facility done? And we have a basketball practice where all the curtains are up, so it cannot be private for one team? That wasn't going to fly, it wasn't going to fly in my book, because we made that, so we were running three gyms all the time unless it was an event. You know what I'm saying? So where are, what is our analysis of when the curtains are down here? We have two curtains in both gyms. If those curtains aren't down, well, are we actually using the space that we should?
But that, that's more administrative thing.
Yeah, they're going to analyze that. But we have to have that stuff to tell the public what's going on here. If I was a public citizen, and I am, I am really curious how much the curtains are down. Because if the curtains aren't going down...
But you know what, I mean, I guess I don't...
Well, if we have a practice and it's occupying a whole gym, and the curtain could come down and somebody else could be in there practicing, then I think two people should be there.
The middle school gym was being too small, though.
Yeah, but what are you talking about?
Well, there's a curtain in the high school, is there not?
No.
Just in the middle school, it's only...
The curtain's got a high school gym. It comes right down in the center, makes two gyms out of that. If we have practices in there and only one team is using a practice, should there be two teams in there practicing? I mean, it's that rolled-down curtain right in the middle.
Do they have, is that a full gym on both sides?
They can have a full practice.
No, that's not a full gym.
They're not full-sized.
I don't know if that curtain's working anymore. They haven't done that in years.
I don't know. But you're interested to know what, if that is even a full gym on that, right now?
When we followed Bradley, as he's gone through some of these community ed programs and stuff, they go to the fieldhouse everybody's talking about. Tell you what, we went to one fieldhouse where every single curtain wasn't down. Now, they have a little more space between. There were others that came pretty close. Our curtains come right down on the center line of the main gym. But if we have practice, does it mean that we are using all that space efficiently? And that's the analysis I think they need to make. Maybe they've already made it.
I don't believe the varsity drops those curtains, because the only full-sized court we have is the high school.
Yeah, you're right.
That's one full-sized court. And when you're practicing fast breaks and...
Yeah, you can't do it on the...
Press breaks, and you can't do it on a small court. You have to have the feel of the full-sized court for varsity team. So that's why they don't do it at varsity level.
The curtain gives you maybe for breaking a class, but for a varsity level practicing.
They need that full-sized court for the practice.
Whenever we can come up with data that for people of the public can look at it and know that we have a full analysis of how we use that space, and in their minds, not ours, that's used appropriately, they would probably be interested in helping so.
And going back to my other question, we wouldn't have to make a decision to put this on the November ballot until like August.
August 20.
August 20. Okay, thank you. So we haven't even decided if we want to put it on the ballot.
Would we want to, no, we wouldn't want to do that until way before that.
But if we didn't, you know, if we were undecided, we wouldn't have to decide until August 20.
That's why your formal resolution would be, need to be adopted by, again...
So one other detail is that we want to make that decision. If we have Max and everybody making up the data?
We need some data.
Is that what we wait for, is the data first?
Some data, information, numbers.
Okay. Yeah, any comments from the community? Mike, go ahead.
I kind of believed you guys were going to let the voters decide, right? The voters did decide. Bringing this back even one year later, to me, is a slap in my face. I guess what I'd like to see from the district is a bigger plan than just gym space. I want well-instructed classes. I want well-offered classes, not only to athletes, not only to gymnastics. I want to see a plan that I can vote yes on. So don't limit this idea to a gym. Putting this into a strategic plan is a better way to go, because if this comes back to me as a gymnasium in November, I can't wait to mark it over.
Okay, other comments? Okay, so we're going to just collect data? Is that where we separate the... Are we good with that?
I think, I think what Bruce was talking about, you can agree or disagree about gym space, okay? When this, when this school was built, it was plenty good enough to drop the curtain and have two, you could have varsity on one end, junior varsity on the other end. Then they picked a time, maybe 20, 30 minutes left in practice, where they did bring the curtain up and go the full, the full distance. But, I mean, some of these things are just beyond ridiculous. Coaches having two-and-a-half and three-hour practices. I think most people would consider that punishment after an hour and a half. You know, what are you doing that you haven't accomplished already? Again, you know, people have said in the 70s there weren't girls' sports. Yes, there were girls' sports. So again, it's the terminology that people tried to use. You can't have something that hasn't been there for 20 or 30 years, and all of a sudden overnight, now it has become a need. Things don't become a need overnight, okay? I think if anybody would have been honest enough and said, no, it's not a need, but it's a big want of ours, and these are the reasons why we want it. But when you keep going with this need stuff, it's ridiculous. The other thing I think is ridiculous is, I think there was a two, three-month misinformation campaign when nobody wants to tell anybody what the cost of this would be. All you want to do is tell them what their taxes are going to increase. That's not the cost, okay? Do you think people got numbers? No, I know people that called in and they were told it was too complicated, too many numbers. So too much work, yeah. Put into a 515-year estimate.
Okay. That's what we stay for now as a board. We just want to start collecting data and verify what many of us were thinking. And is that enough for you, Bob?
Yes, I believe enough to work on.
Okay, and you can delegate that on the morning?
We'll work on it together.
Okay. Then we're going to go to informational remarks. And Mr. Huggett, you're right back on.
Just be aware that I've been meeting with, had a lot of discussion with Yule and also with another company about bidding some of the easy old pieces. Very hard to compare apples to apples on this, and that's what I'm finding, is that it's very difficult. Had a lot of discussion with one company today, and I also did bring in another, what I could say is, and the word that he uses is a commissioning analysis, analysis. We did the recommissioning. What he really does is look at that and make sure that it's done right when you're fixing it now.
What company is this?
Not a company, it's an individual person. That individual has an electrical engineer from Penn State. He's been doing this since, I think, '87, I think. And he's worked for it 15 years as a technician, fixing those types of things. He's also worked with Excel Energy on engineering controls and efficiency programs. So yeah, that's quite a bit. I just got a chance to talk with him today, but I do believe that we're going to need to bring somebody like that on board for a number of reasons. One is to make sure that we do it right. Two is to make sure that what we have voted out is apples to apples.
Does he work with the company, is he?
He doesn't work with the company, he's an independent person.
No, no, but I mean, does he work with who we'll have, with you or...
He doesn't work with either of the companies that right now we've looked at for quotes. He's an independent person. His job isn't to work with those companies. His job is to make sure that the job gets done right, and that he follows everything that's done. I'm really going to look that way. I'm not sure if the board is fine with me following through with that. We're going to be using some of the dollars to do that. I think we can make it all work within budget. But I do believe that we need to have that type of commissioning engineer, is what I would consider his title of that, too. And what I do is I will look at the project, provide recommendations, make sure the project's done right. Would break the buildings apart, hire him to manage both projects, the high school and or secondary and the elementary. Also put together specs to make sure that we're bidding and know exactly what we're getting. Because right now, based on my conversations with the other company and him, they, the way that Yule has said what they're going to do could be done a number of different ways. And we want to make sure it's done in the way that is most efficient and most effective for the building. So he'd make sure that the job's done right, appropriate manner. Also help us put together a long-range plan on how we want to continue to move forward with the management of our buildings, that type of thing. At least right now, he's the person I would look at, but I haven't checked to see if there's anybody else that have a list of his references. He's worked with other school buildings on this type of thing. But I do believe that in the end, he also believes that there's also, there may be some more rebates available to us, because he's worked for Excel on that exact type of program. So he was curious about the ECOs and whether they included a couple of things, and he's going to check on that. But it would be per hour, it would be that type of thing. It'd be a set of all to do, elementary building, set them all to help us with the high school building.
I don't know if I'm really there for something like that. We've been down that once before, and we've been down there, so many experts. We've had, ate so much expert advice through this district in the last three years, and I don't know. I'm just shy from when somebody's coming in that...
I understand, but this is your dilemma. Okay, if you don't go down that road and get somebody who has those kind of qualifications and can make sure that they're following whatever we do, and it's done effectively and efficiently with our controls and everything else.
But it's not what Yule does?
That's what they've been doing for as many years.
Or something like a... But they still have, they still have to have the money to give to those things.
But he would, he would be no different than the... But he would be no different than the people who you hire to manage. If we do our roofs, or if we did the gym, for instance, you would be hiring somebody, whether it's Ari Morton or a different company, to manage that project, to make sure that everything is done according to requirements and according to specifications. If you don't do that, believe me, I wish I had the expertise that I could do it and pay the district those dollars. But if you don't do that, you are going to rely, and it was a concern by some community members, that, you know, in some ways you're saying, okay, Yule, here, do this. Now you're going to tell us what we're going to do, and now you're going to do it. And you're going to assume that they do everything exactly in the best manner possible when they did the study themselves. Right now, I'm not sure even if Yule will get this project for these ECOs. That's why I bring in other companies to make sure that what Yule wants to do is the best way to do it.
Yeah, but you can have experts on top of experts on top of experts to tell you what you need to do and so forth, so.
I would rather hire somebody that's working for me.
I'd do if I had millions of dollars, just to be able to do that.
I believe in the end, this pays for itself.
I know, and we've been told that as a board.
There is, but there is nobody here on our staff that is a.
This is like an order up for this project.
He's being hired to watch all the projects, but Mark is right. You know, and I want to keep this, but there's nobody in this district that has the expertise with those units that get them fixed the way you need to get it fixed. You're hiring this person to represent you. All I can tell the board is that after I call the recommendations, I will believe if that's accurate, that it's in the best interest of this district to vote on that road because of the background checks and the recommendations that I will have talked through. Then it's up to the board on what they do, but keep in mind, if it goes south the other way and you don't have somebody watching, that to me is more of a possibility than it will be the other way if you put limits on what you're going to pay the individual and very specific job requirements on what that person's going to do.
Everything you do, you seem to consult somebody. And so I'm assuming that what you've done here is talked to some of your comrades and people and they're probably recommending this.
I haven't spent a lot of time talking to the superintendents of all this. I have a list of people who I'm going to talk to tomorrow, or the next eight, ten, on what happens tomorrow. But, yeah, I will certainly do some checking with other superintendents and people that have done this type of project and how they proceeded. I mean, I would admit that you're going to have to keep an eye on whoever you hire. And that includes where he does the ventilation work. But all I know is that I could be standing right next to the person doing the ventilation work, and I wouldn't be able to tell you what they were doing was accurate or not. But that's going to be my recommendation, at least the way I'm feeling right now. I do have some checking to do. What I need from the board is whether you're going to allow me to do this or whether you want me to come back at the next meeting with the name and get your permission. The dollars are there, so it's kind of a fuzzy thing. I'm not bringing, I'm not spending any dollars that we don't have. And I believe, based on some things that I have found out as far as a couple of other things that there, that I believe will be under budget, and I think that will be mine as far as the budget.
So say they bring this person in and they help us get those bits out? So that you start getting them out of those problems and figuring out who's going to do it.
What he would do first probably, we would take the ECOs. He'd put it together on everything that needs to be done specifically in a manner that needs to be done. And then we'd get votes from two companies on what they're going to do and the exact work that's going to be done. For instance, part of my concern is that certain companies have very restrictive, and it's been talked about in the facilities committee, very restrictive controls. Which means that once, if we go down that road, we better plan on hiring those people all the time if we're going to do any work onto controls. The equipment itself, we could hire other people, but for the control units themselves, you're going to have to hire that company. And I would prefer, for instance, not to go down that road. I would prefer to have a control system in place that would allow anybody that I want to hire to work on that system, to work on that system. But those are the types of things that I need the expertise from people who are very familiar with those systems in order to do it. I could have an adult that the individual would be more than happy to come in and talk to the board about, on what he can offer.
I think we hired you to do a job.
I agree with that.
I think we hired you to do a job, and if you believe that it would be in the district's best interest to go down the road of getting an expert in, I believe it would be telling you, we're going to do your job to do it any other way.
Believe me, there's nobody around that wants to spend money more than me. I really don't. I do want to be very, you know, I try to stay away from consultants as much as I can. But I think for a few things that we're going to run into now, for this project, we want to make sure that it's done right. We want to make sure that it's planned for the future growth of whatever we're going to do in the future to make sure things are going to run effectively. And if we need to remodel or expand on that, we're in good shape to be able to do it in the right manner.
And it sounds like you've done the background, or you're doing the background.
I will do.
You checked on him. You know we have the money, and you believe, like you said, y'all are where you don't like to spend a dime, you can get by with a nickel. So if you think that you would save money, or you believe there's things already that you're aware of that could be done differently with the expertise from someone else, I would.
I do believe, based on the history that I'm aware of, I do understand the concern of the board. I absolutely do. This will not be a per hour type of thing. This will be a set them all for certain things that we expect to be done. And I'm certainly not going to go down this road if I don't, after I talk to other schools that have had this individual do something similar, I'm not going to go down that road if there's any doubt that it's not going to be extremely helpful to the district. But like I said, I bring it up now because I knew it would be a concern of the board.
Where I sit on it is I would hate to spend all that money and not get it done right. Then we did a huge disservice to the public. Go to them for a bunch of money to get this thing put back together, and if it's not done right, we're not getting.
When I brought the second company in today, he said, well, this is an example. He talked about a thing that is an ECO, but he said, you can do it this way, or you can do it this way. And from the point of the consultant I talked to today too, he said, well, you want to do it the right way, which is this way. Well, if we don't have somebody that very clearly specifies what's going to happen to them, then we risk on doing it the cheapest way, which may not be the best way for the district.
So in this gentleman's career, he has got lots of experience with.
Well, I will tell you this, based on my conversation with him, that would be accurate. But I have not done the background checks, at least the calls to people who have worked with him. And I have a list of those that I'll be going through.
So exactly what you're looking for tonight was the.
I think there's two things. One, because of past history, I wanted the board to have the opportunity to say, we want this, we want to bring it forward, we want this on the agenda for us to approve. I wanted the board to have that opportunity. Do I believe it's necessary? No, we have the dollars in there. We're taking through. We've already approved the project. This is to help ensure that the project is completed in the right way. So I wanted to bring it to the board because I didn't want a surprise on the part of the board in any manner. That's why it's being thrown on the table right now.
So you just want a discussion about whether we want you to finish the background checks and.
What I want is to know whether you guys want to have a final say on hiring this person, or a consultant, whoever that might be. If you don't, then if you're saying just do your job, then I'm going to say it, then I'll do my job.
I don't think we need to bring this on the board.
We just want to spend the money most appropriately.
I will keep the board informed on all of this. So if the next time you'll hear more, that will.
Okay, so when we came up with this project, who gave us those monies?
Yule did.
Okay. So by their knowledge, this is the money that would fix everything?
Yes.
Could.
Okay. It depends upon which way you want to do it. So now if we bring another person in here to make sure it's done correctly, which is going to take monies away from that project because you're not going to be able to do everything because that monies aren't going to be there, then we'll be doing less of what we wanted to do in the first place.
Maybe, maybe not.
Well, I'm just saying, those are.
In my discussion, he looked at quite a bit of the information that Yule had given us. And he says there were things that he believes that Yule had slated for them to do that he believes we can do. And part of it's going to be the training with all this and putting a maintenance program in place. That's a very important part of all this, and also getting my maintenance people up to gear so that they can do it versus having somebody else come in and do it. So that's, I do understand. And like I said, I will update you on this every, and the community every minute as we go forward. Any other, at least, talk about having, I guess, probably at this point, it became more of a discussion than I wanted. Snow day is, just be aware, we have one snow day. I would really prefer not to have the makeup day on January 2nd. It is scheduled in the calendar. It's just not a very good date. It's the Friday coming back from the winter break. Not the best date, but it was kind of one of the few days that I could add to the calendar. I would like to make that decision for sure by December 16th, by the next board meeting. If we don't get any days, I'd probably say let's make that day up further down the year, depending on what happens. So just be aware of that, unless the board has other thoughts on that. Girls' basketball game today. Do you want me to add the new report from now on to the board? You guys handed that report out at the end of the last meeting. You guys get a chance to take a look at it.
The new financial report?
The new financial report, yeah. I just want to know if you want me to add that to pack it? If that's what the consensus the board is.
I thought we were going to talk about that.
Pardon me?
I thought we were going to talk about that.
Okay, you want me to have me put that on as an agenda item in the talk call reports?
Yeah.
It'll be on for the 16th, so just be aware. That's what I got.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, the MSBA delegate assembly is coming up weekend. And the MSBA with the C organization did come up with a resolution to really push for better equalization. I noticed on one of the charts that they did a little bit this year, and they're really going to be pushing to do more so that schools like ours will get more funding, or get our funding equalized. So like, go back to the same lines, your education shouldn't depend on your zip code in Minnesota. It should be equal across the state. And I'll let you guys go on one.
Okay. Anything else? And then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hello.
Motion by Mark to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Luke. All the members say aye. Aye. Don't say no.